All right, we have a day for slaves. We have a day for slaves. No action taken, but we will announce later on the next meeting. If it doesn't add to what I'm thinking, we stand here.
I thought there were some actions.
So we are gonna do it and have next move.
The second Texas.
I call a vote in the county council for March 8, 2016, time you are. We have a motion that's going to be made. We just came out of the day for session.
Mr. McDaniel. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like for you to make the motion that release the three candidates that have been selected in the executive session for county administrator. First being Mr. Gregory Alexander, second, Mr. John Candy, and third, Mr. Columbus Stevens.
Second.
Motion is second. That's by no means the order of the way that it... That's just the three candidates. No order in that.
Because after all...
I'm gonna call. Call for a vote, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Seven, eight. All right, as always, we have our implication and then we'll have a place to leave. We're a lot of things. Let's pray. Hallelujah, Father, I thank you for bringing us here today and I ask for safe return and we go home. I ask for prayer tonight for Lieutenant Larry Young and his family, dead to share at the fire this way, this fire. I ask for your leadership and your prayers, which I carry on the business of this county. I ask for your prayers for the armed forces around the world that put themselves in danger every day. I ask for the prayers for the shut-ins, the sick, the hungry, everyone else that needs to care. I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I follow God with a huge... To start with tonight, I ask for approval of our agenda with any additions or additions.
Chairman, I move to set the agenda date in March 8. Do any additions or additions necessary.
Second.
Chairman, one addition. I think you got your place draft ordinance number 813 dealing with parcel property that the county will... The council will request best considered purchase of the construction of the fire station.
Okay, that's an addition to the agenda. Are there any questions concerned about that? If not, we vote by show of our right hand, approve the agenda. Seven, eight. Ask for approval of minutes for the February 23th, late 2016 time.
Senator, first.
The minutes are not included in this session. Not included in our package. Oh, that's the next one. It was... You told me the next meeting. Minutes are not fine. We didn't have the minutes in our package this time because of the...
We all make that night. We can approve vote in minutes next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Number one item tonight is public hearing order and play away, no good time.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is adding the council calls the simplified fact that they expanded being moved right before the end, right at the end of the year. This is simply adding their properties into the Octagon Park Agreement, which would be beneficial to the county. That's the split of the 50-40-10 split. This is just expanding the boundaries, so to speak, by putting their property into the Octagon Park. And we would certainly recommend favorable approval of that.
Okay. Public hearing ordinance 808 is now open. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward. State your name, vote again. No one to speak with a close vote here and I ask for third reading, motion, third reading ordinance 808.
Send to approve 808, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion is second. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Kirkshank, could you explain the 50-40-10 split one more time for...
Yes. In Octagon Park, it's in any industrial and business park where you participate with another county. The division of funds, of fees within those parks can be allocated as this council needs to be. In Octagon Park, the council decided 50% of the funds would go to the school district, 55,000, 40% would go to the county, 10% would go to the reinvestment fund that's set up in the county.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? None, we're calling for a vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Seven, eight. Our next item, Lawrence County Disabilities Special Need, Mr. Jason Tapler.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members and Mr. Chairman. I'm Jason Tapler, the Executive Director for the Lawrence County Disabilities and Special Needs Board, and I'm glad to be with you tonight. I can recognize two of my board members that are here, Phil Senior and Janice Trivel and Peter Littlefield. I can recognize them, one for their service to the county and to the board, also for my counsel that you guys nominate our board members, and I appreciate that. You've done a great job towards there. And along those lines, I come to you again in March, we met at this kind of annual event, where we asked that you declare March Disability Awareness Month. Along that effort, what we're asking is that we raise awareness that people with disabilities are contributing members of our society, where we work, live, and play here. Specifically to the work part, I want to thank council for your contribution this past year of $10,000 to help us transport people back and forth to work. And if you know Lawrence County is a rural community, there's not public expectation for that, so we have to provide that. And without that, we have 20 people that would not be working. So you are creating jobs, and I appreciate that. Again, thank you on behalf of our 508 families that we support and our 300 employees for all that you do to help us each day. Thank you.
Mr. Tapler. We got resolution 2016-03, Disabilities Special Need Month. Do we have a motion for that? Seven, eight. Motion is second. Any other further discussion? None, we're calling for a vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Seven, eight. Next item, discussion is second reading ordinance 811. Mr. President.
Yes, this, I think, Mr. Rushon kind of explained this in the last meeting. This is a piece of property that is on what is commonly referred to as the ATW tract that was purchased by the county some years back. This has given the Lawrence County, excuse me, the Lawrence Commission Public Works access to a pump station that is located just over the railroad track off of 241 there. It's also given them a wide way to get into that piece, council will be transferring about half, was it half an acre?
A little over half an acre.
A little over half an acre, which encompasses the pump station and then giving them a 50-foot wide way of ingress and egress to the property. And we would certainly recommend this to the worthwhile...
Do I have a motion for second reading ordinance 811?
To approve 811, Mr. Chairman.
Right, that's a...
Second discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is second. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question, I need to make sure that I correct my thinking. I don't know if I think this is... The additional small area that we're talking about touches that road bed, is there a... My concern is, is that road bed a permanent easement for that property?
The idea would be that CPW would be allowed to use that road bed to access their property. The right of way that we're setting up is just for ingress and egress to that property.
But of that piece of property that we're providing over CPW, it's going to touch the road bed, it does not include the road bed.
Correct. It's just the right of way that would include the road bed, so that they can use the road bed to access the property.
But if a company or entity bought that piece of property, they would not have to honor that road bed. Is that true?
They would have to honor the access to it.
The road bed is not... Let me speak to that. There is across it in... In place of there, 241, 400, what's not there? There is a CSX crossing agreement, if you will, that allows crossing over the track at that point, yes, as a access. The county, everything inside the right of way or outside the right of way of the railroad can... Yes. Which we can dedicate that, extend it however wide, however long we want, if you want that to be a permanent road. But there is a, to answer your question, yes, there is a crossing agreement at this point in time that goes with the lane, allows you to get across that to the property. But the road, the road bed that you're talking about, which would be the driveway into Mr. Public Works, like the driveway, Mr. Littlefield. Well, the 50-foot wide way is coming off of that. So you're gonna be crossing around the track and using that 50-foot access to get to the property. I guess my thought there, and I could be just way off track, and I pause after some, if I bought the property from the county and I decided I did not want that road bed there, I have no legal requirements to keep it there just to honor this position. And if that's true, that there's not a legal easement to that road bed. And if that's true, we're giving CPW a half acre. Why not have them an option? I see what you're trying to... But yes, there is a legal access across the road. How would you tell me that railroad tracks and that road bed is forever legal access? No, not forever, but it's an access across there. If a substance went by, you, some company, that could change, it could widen, it could end, or it could take... And if it ends, you still have to give them access to their property. That's all I want to make sure that we're providing, and I can't buy the property at some point, can't land it.
The original idea of that...
I thought that the cane land law gets me where I want to be. I thought that.
The original idea of that single entrance going in, what he's talking about was for both construction and for emergencies like fires, police, that sort of thing. And of course, permanent, if ATW locates well located, permanent road would be coming off industrial park, so we got him...
Yeah, 100 Park.
100 Park, you know, down, apparently over there, this would be, it wouldn't be used that much.
There's a big monster valve between 100 Park and this property.
Correct.
If that one broke the structure, probably...
Okay, my thoughts. Any others discussion? None, we're voting by show of our right hand, all in vote. Next item is Lawrence County Hazard Mitigation Plan, Mr. Joey Avery.
Mr. Chairman, member of council, it's always a pleasure to be here and present something to you for your approval. But before we get started, I'd like to call Mr. Rick Green up. Rick has been a true partner in this process of establishing this plan, some of the demographic information, statistics that he's provided for us. We've been adored throughout his workmanship. But the hazard mitigation plan that we have in front of you is a five-year FEMA-required process that we must go through. We have to analyze the natural hazards that we are faced with within our county. And we try to outline those, and we try to have a plan of response, we have a plan of education, and we have mitigation, so we try to prevent situations occurring that's natural to our county. And probably the most important part of this presentation today is without this plan, we would be unable to obtain any credible monies for reimbursement for any disasters that we have in this county. Let me take you back to October when we had the floods that came in. We had some damage to utilities. Field, Lawrence County Water Service Commission had, and I'm using rough figures here, 150,000 plus damage. Mr. Rushon probably had 50-plus thousand, City of Platoon, City of Lawrence. So a lot of utilities in the county suffered damage. Without this approved plan from the council, we would be unable to apply for those funds. Now, this plan has been sent back and forth to the state emergency management division for their review, and we've also sent it to FEMA for their review. FEMA has submitted an unofficial approval letter to us in regards to they accept our plan. In order to get that official approval letter, we must have approval from the county council via a resolution, and then we submit that to the state, to FEMA, and then we are meeting all the requirements that is required of us for that. Don't want to beat the scene anymore than I have to. There's a lot of reading in there, a lot of statistics. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Mr. Green, stand ready to answer any questions also. And that's basically all I'm doing is asking for your approval to approve this plan, complete the resolution process, and some add to your thinking.
Does anyone have any question, Mr. Running, Mr. Avery?
Just want to thank Mr. Avery, Mr. Green for following this thorough information.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got a resolution 2016-05. Do we have a motion?
Send to approve 2016-05, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? If not, we're voting by show of our right hand, all in vote. Seven, eight. Our next item is Resolution 2016-05. Clearing April with spare housing. Where at Lawrence County Council desires that all its citizens be afforded the opportunity to attain a decent, safe, and sound living environment. Where at Lawrence County Council would resist discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, or nationality, disability, and/or immediate status in the sale, rental, or provision of other housing services. Where at the state of South Carolina enacted the South Carolina Fair Housing Law in 1989. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Lawrence County Council would issue by adoption, doesn't make the month of April 2016 its fair housing month in Lawrence County. Now let's for motion. So... Motion is second. Any further discussion? None, we should vote by show of our right hand.
Mr. Chairman, this is a kind of Mr. Avery's program that does set the county in position to obtain some federal funding for various programs that is available. And we've done it in the past, and we want to award super work, remember this, here developing this requirement. We'll sweep for that, and I think that's... We do it every year, so that's what we do. Thank you.
Our next item is a report from Mr. Garrett McDaniel, he's committee chairman, County Council Committee on Parks, Recreation, Tourism, and Natural Resources for Resolution 2016-06. Mr. McDaniel.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Last Thursday, the Committee on Parks and Recreation met and decided unanimously to adopt the concept, Lake Greenwood Master Plan. We have got a resolution together with the basic synopsis. I hope everyone's read over it. Only change, I believe, we made to the initial plan is that we want Mr. Greenwood County to know that there will be no initial financial obligations unless approved by the county first. Lawrence County's current land use codes, regulations are applicable only to properties within Lawrence County, and that Lawrence County Council will appoint three representatives serving effective July 1st, 2016. And I ask for approval of the resolution.
Okay, this is coming as a recommendation from committee, so it doesn't not make a second. Are there any further discussion?
Yes.
Did Newberry County approve this master plan?
Yes, Newberry did not. Newberry did not. Has, has... As of last Thursday night, they were, had it gone before their campaign? No, it has not.
There's only a minimal amount of property, looks like there was property in Newberry County.
Right.
The resident in Greenwood County was here to discuss this, said that they want Lawrence, Newberry, I think Lawrence and Greenwood on board first, and then they're gonna break Newberry once it's processed, what he gave what he understood.
And I understand that this resolution is no financial obligation on the county, but I also have enough sense to believe that they'll be asking for money down the road FYI. I think we all realize that.
It also contains a clause that three representatives were to be appointed in Lawrence County. It'll be a nine-member board, three persons, three people will come to Lawrence County. And I guess we'll decide later who those three people will be. But are there any further discussion on this resolution? If none, we're voting by show of our right hand, all in vote. Seven, eight. Next is a report from the County Council Committee on Public Works, Mr. Stuart Cumming.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Committee for Public Works, that on Thursday, March 3rd, at 3:30 PM. Said that information from our Public Works director, Rob Rushon, reviewing Unified Plan for animal control for Lawrence County as a whole. Administrators from City of Platoon, City of Lawrence, and Lawrence County all put a positive regard to this plan. It would unify animal control for the entire county, both City of Lawrence and City of Platoon, use animal control revenues that are currently yet to pay the county that handle animal control. The additional annual operating cost for Lawrence County would be covered entirely by City of Lawrence and City of Platoon totaling $55,952. Basically, the cities would pay their operating revenues for animal control to the county to handle all animal control for unified service. Lawrence County, City of Lawrence, and City of Platoon would have a 50-25-25 split for initial capital costs totaling $128,000. This would cover expansion of kennels and a new F-150 truck. The Committee of Public Works studied and looked at options and budgetary concerns regarding capital and operating costs for the plan, and unanimously found the need for Director Rushon to present the plan to full council in an upcoming budget meeting. Thank you.
I also sit in on that meeting, and it should not be a win-win situation for Lawrence County. We don't need to take any further action on that yet.
I think Mr. Rushon will make that presentation part of the budget, and I think the City of Platoon and City of Lawrence already have such included those funds within their budget. Basically, Bay County has a few lot of work on this thing, that's a fact. I think everybody, I think you did a very good job describing what happened, and I think everybody agrees, it's possible everybody could get involved.
Mr. Rushon, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I think it summed up pretty well. I think this, again, is a good thing for both municipalities and the county alike. Hopefully, we can work out the capital, money that would be involved on the part of Lawrence County. If we can't, we can still go through with a agreement of sorts that would just affect our live release rates. Hopefully, we can find that money to both do the agreement as well as keep our live release rates where they are, or do a little better.
Okay. Our next item is Resolution 2016-07. Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is, I guess, part two or three of the permission project that you recently approved, changing the permission fee allowance from the old lease backs to the simplified fee. We had turned in a document to restate those. In part of that process, you heard the name Project Rainboots. I take no credit for the neighbors, they have to come up with something a little better than that, I blame that on camera. Project Rainboots is proposing, and this is not finally to make the acquisition. This would be a commitment of $43 million and absorbing the existing industry and plant that is there. The resolution is asking for the commitments, kind of the inducement resolution, as you have seen before with other companies, to say, if you do this, this is what the county would propose to offer. And what is proposed in this is an investment period of seven years for them to invest the $43 million. Would be a credit period of 10 years that could be extended at 50% credit, which is in keeping with the guidelines of normal for this type of investment. It'd be 6% of fee allowance, and it would be a 30-year penalty. Mr. Coleman is here, Mr. Stone is here, along with Carla, who has been working with the county on this. We certainly would recommend this, this company employs a lot of people, we certainly like to keep those people here. The second part of this, which is encouraging, is it first being an ordinance that would prove the fee allowance. prove, uh, the fee allowance really, you don't have to agree with anything, partying right now, but this is, this is important, there's stage. Say, these are the things that we could put on the table, uh, for the benefit of Lawrence County and the existing industry that you'd be required by, uh, of course. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So, we need to get a motion for Resolution 16-07, and a motion for third degree?
First, we, first, I don't have a question.
Move to a period of Resolution 2016-07?
Second, second, Mr. Russian and Slaker, are there any further questions about this?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Crouppen, if I understand correctly, we're going to give them a 6% fee and lieu, and never going to take half of that off.
Right. Half, half of the tax.
Half of the tax bill.
Right.
For 10 years, it could be extended.
Yes, sir. That if this, this project is in the Woodfield Park, which 62.5% of the funds is still in that park in Greenwood County.
Right.
The cost to Lawrence County, I think, and the basis, uh, with that credit was the difference of what we're giving there, what is there now is about $12 million.
And that's the all debt?
Debt, yeah.
Anything about the company?
The Project Rain Boots?
Yes, sir.
They are, they probably be number one interior company in the world, I suppose.
Number what?
Interior, they make interiors, of course.
Oh, okay.
They're one of the top.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
I forgot the level of labor. Try to look for 6997, vote by a show of our right hand.
As far as, Mr. Chairman, we could, first, we, 12, which is, uh...
I would prefer to read in the title on the order, it's eight twelve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd prefer to read the rule, the order is eight twelve.
Second, second motion, second. This is followed up while we get to discussion. Any other questions? None, we vote by a show of our right hand. The next thing that was added was property for fire station, Mr. Gray Lynn, in the upper part of the county.
You got a property, property. Copy through. Sandy, do you want to go over what we've, uh, put this, what this? You go ahead, tell that parking lot.
Uh, yeah, this property, uh, that's located in the upper part of county. Um, this, this property is approximately two acres, it's a triangle piece, it's, uh, the asset price would build a, a good price for the comps that were put there. We have had, yes, actually had been up there, he has a bit, uh, Rob Russian has also been up there, but, but let's take a look at it, we have a lot, a lot of property. Uh, we do feel that this is a great piece of property, if it is in the area that you need to make five, go my latest, uh, work for the, the halls and businesses.
For the benefit of the camp, if you got the paper here that you faxed down earlier, everybody's got it in.
This would be one of the four stations that would be built, uh, the class five rating as part of the bond, and you can receive, and it's already issued. Uh, I think this is the first one we've really tied well. The second station we constructed, the first one, we were really tied down as far as five miles, five miles ago. If it's within that area, you need that for a, for a guarantee of five ratings, that area of county where the worst areas are rated 10, is that right?
And, and just to follow up on that, as you can see, the ordinance, uh, the consideration for purchases, $16,000, county to pay all the costs, the coverage fees, and all of that. We would allow, uh, Seagulls, as the county administrator, to expedite these documents necessary to, including this transaction. Uh, we did leave a blank in there as far as the funding, I'm, uh, I left that note, the council will turn it over, there comes up a lot of signs of other sources of funds. Uh, this would be first, but forty reasons of public care you could be necessary to acquire this property. Uh, there is a contract, uh, that is pending, uh, we, if we get a vote on the first reading, and, uh, or, uh, submit it to the county.
This would be a bottom annual expense as part of the reason of 2.3, I think, 2.5 million dollars, this could start with, and then it'll definitely be a first step in the process.
Correct.
Uh, I think it was Ashley, he's actually, he's actually gone to...
He has gone to the site, and, uh, I do have, uh...
I think you put bill on it, didn't you, in the, you know, the contract deal?
And I do have some drawings that he did, just very quick drawings, of how to build a kitchen. I don't have anything, uh, unless council members have, can you, can you put a question?
Well, let me add, a motion first, first reading, order is eight thirteen, we have a motion, so move, Mr. Chairman. Motion in the second, in discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Lee, right with, the elevation of this area, pose site, uh, pose a footprint for the park itself, is that going to take a lot of preparation, and it's in pretty good shape there?
It's in pretty good shape, um, I wouldn't say that it lugs as far as elevation, we, we do have a, uh, a ditch that, that's just a matter of putting some concrete in and drop it up on that.
Minimal, minimal rating.
There's minimal, I mean, we do, we do have some trees, um, but it's, it's not any, any large.
I know we've looked at some property and dig a little deeper, and there's been some pretty, pretty mild elevations.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is not in the hole, this is not a, uh...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I understand Mr. Russian's been looking at it, and you'd like to add something to it?
No, this is pretty good, this property, fairly flat, very little drainage to do, a lot of trees to clear, but nothing outrageous. Um, we looked at drainage for the area as well, there is a ditch there that runs close to the footprint of the, of the building that we would probably relocate, just doing some fine grading. There's a cross on the pipe in the utility pole that, um, Mr. Ashley's going to work around. Nothing major, um, site should be fine for, uh, minimal work to get it ready to start construction.
Are there any other, Scott, this is a good, good place for, uh, I know the land hasn't had anything on it except farming and all wildlife has been there. Completely, makes a good, good location.
We got a motion in the second, the order is eight thirteen, this is first reading, all in favor, raise your right hand. Six zero, six, one, one absolute.
Take it.
Mr. Pitt says leave early for a COVID-ish meeting tonight. Next item on our agenda is the administrator report, Mr. Ernie Seager, he's getting shot up, too, very quick.
We did make the, uh, did make the move, uh, last, well, actually, in the week before last, to a new building, uh, we're in it now, uh, there, we actually figured out a, I think doorwork, you actually get into place, but it's, it's a very good facility, uh, I think Mr. Russian, Walt, Mr. Parker, everyone, uh, helped with that, uh, we, Joe Anderson has been absolutely critical in, in our computer and security system setup, and we feel like that we're, I'm still in unboxing, but I feel like we're on the way to get, get things finalized and done, uh, I don't care if Woodman threw it, I think others, if you want to come up, we'd love to show it, show it to you. We will have a open house as soon as we get things kind of, uh, unboxed and in the right place, and, uh, but I, I urge everyone, uh, this is a great facility, I urge everyone to come take a look, we get a chance. Also, in conjunction with that, uh, we vacated the, uh, Church Street building, the old county health department over here on, on Catholic Street, and, um, Mr. Russian, I think, the chairman had asked Mr. Russian to work with, uh, department heads to see about who may be interested, if anyone's interested in, in, in moving into that building. I think you've got a memo in your eyes, and got some responses back, and would like to, uh, as soon as possible, maybe turn it over to the committee and let, let, let that committee work with Mr. Mr. Russian on the, uh, on that process, I don't, we had three or four of them requested, is that right?
We had three, we had three requests and, uh, a couple others that we, we'd like to consider turning.
Okay. Uh, one suggestion might be to, to, Mr. Committee for Public Works, and the general chair, that's your expression, how you want to do that, but, uh, I think it's not absolutely time critical, but I think we would like to move on as, as quickly as we could, try to try to get the building, uh, you know, try to get, just get it to whatever degree we need to do, and move, move somebody in. Uh, I think that's, uh, if you want to make that sound today, it's fine, at night, need some time to think about it, that's okay, do another couple weeks, we'll look over it.
We still have some stuff to move on, we have, we've moved all our files out, but, um, we have, ran the memo, we lost, did run the memo, we did get responses from it, and, um, just kind of looking, looking forward to what we might do with the building going forward.
As soon as you get an outline of potentials, or whatever...
I have that right now.
Uh, we'll get with Mr. Seager, and we'll set up a meeting maybe.
And, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Anderson, uh, the Lawrence County Spotlight on Agriculture will be March, oh, for Thursday night, okay, it's coming Thursday night at 6 o'clock at First Pentunian Church, I think called Family Life Center in Clinton, uh, there's some tickets here, I think, uh, that you can, that, that are available, that you send them over to go, we've got tickets here, is that, is that right? And, um, I'll put this all out here, thank you.
Okay, uh, we have public comment time, do we have anybody to sign up for the comment time? Believe I noticed, uh, Mr. Jim.
Go. I like my shoes, you're showing up.
Good sleigh, you're not.
Good sleigh, all y'all, I want to thank what job y'all doing. I just want to come tonight, thank Ernie for, uh, for the job that he's done. Ernie, you served 26, 27 years, you know how many meetings that is? Roughly 600 council meetings, no doubt how many special meetings, tall meetings, or whatever. But I've been a lot of places, done a lot of things with Ernie, uh, for the good of the camp, for the county, and Ernie's thought of us real well, all over the state. He, he has a great reputation, and I just wanted to, I treasure his friendship, and, uh, I just want to tell him, uh, thank you for a job well done, and, uh, I hope you have a head to retire. Thanks, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, Jim was on, on, signed up, so we'll close the public comment time, and I'll ask comments from council members, and Mr. Todd.
None at this time, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Young? Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, just ask to continue to pray for Lieutenant Larry Young's family, and, you know, that's all for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Knight?
I'm just excited for a place to be and pick to put the fire station, this is one that's on good, wide state, state highway road, uh, counter road that I live on, joint stocks that Cory has sold, and it looks, uh, good, and it'll be on this 385 Frontage Road all the way to, uh, Stewart Dayer Road, which connects with Frenchy Church Road, so that's the area we're in. It's a very good location, I've never been in a landfill in there or anything, or at least that in 78 years, so, that's all I got to say. Thank, thank the county employees.
Ms. Anderson?
I'd just like to echo that, I think Glavine finally got one of the plots for the fire department, and also that everybody continue to pray for their Lieutenant Larry Young and his family, uh, and also they wrote a re-club, Lawrence will be holding an auction on March the 11th, starting at 5:30, and, uh, I forget the, uh, auction, I forget the place, on 76, uh, but anyway, have tickets available at $25, and, uh, it's a buffet, open bar, and live music. Thank you.
Mr. Dan?
Can I have one second? Um, if you don't mind, Mr. I want to thank Mr. Coleman for his comments, he, you know, been a friend a long time, I appreciate what he said. I thought this was going to be my last meeting, I'm not sure it is, but, uh, but I do want to thank this council, and thank this county, and I've been, I've had a long, for a lifetime to be able to serve and make a difference, I hope, and I want to thank, uh, this council for, for their, their, uh, patience, and I think that, I think the three names we mentioned earlier tonight, I, I, we've had an opportunity to meet with these folks early on, and I think, I think they can replace whoever it is, will, will do a really good job, but, uh, I do want to, uh, express my appreciation to the county, to employees, to Walt, to Mr. Crouppen, and others who have worked with me over the years, and I, I look forward to, I'm not going anywhere, I'm going to be on Parkview Drive on my own, I hope, but, but again, I, I do appreciate it, I've been able to be here. Thanks, sir.
I'd like to remind everyone up here on council about the economic, uh, interest to the commission to do this month, we don't send it in and coddle you 100 bucks. I did go through the new building last week, we had a lot of happy employees over there, I, I never saw a smile in my whole life. But it's a beautiful building, it's a usable building, every part of it's usable, you know. I'd also like to ask prayers for Deputy Young, and I've heard nothing but the best out of this man, especially through the coons system, and I, I was looking at Facebook, it's like the name on the church department, it was up to 1,000 of responses that they've got by this age, which is their problem. And Mr. Ernie, I don't think I've got enough time here to not talk about Mr. Ernie, so... I just feel like Mr. Ernie's a great man, and this county's going to realize what they lost when Ernie leaves here. I am guilty of calling him daddy a while back. Ernie's always been good to me, and, and you call, ask Ernie a question about anything, he's going to get back to you with a telephone call, or a piece of paper, and he's going to be sure to miss this in this county, you know. I think Ernie's going to help us make a transition to the new administration, whoever it might be. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you've done to this county. I don't like to cry. Nothing else, we got an extension session, we got employment matter, we have a motion to go on extension session, so move, Mr. Chairman. We have a session?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Six zero, uh, one absolute. We're taking a five-minute reschedule.
You're thinking of here to have a big, no, it's...
They say something, say something.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we do.
All right, yeah, I'll take it, say, anything else to come before, Count? We had a personal matter, no action, say, we stand, Jerry.